Hello everyone, I'm Abby. This is the mat work part of this week's Pilates YouTube class. Now, I'm going to be using the small overball with this week's class. Now, you don't have to, but I know a lot of you actually have one of these at home. We've deflated it a little bit, so it's got a little bit of give. If you don't have a ball, you can use a small cushion off the sofa or something equivalent, just something that's got a little bit of give and isn't too heavy. So you can get a little bit inventive. It's not necessary, so everything that we do today can be done without the ball. But it gives you a little bit of extra instability with some of the exercises to make them a little bit more challenging, if you want a challenge. Okay, so we're going to start with Clam's Level 2. So we're going to lie down and side lying in that crook lying position. And if you're going to use the ball or something similar, we're going to pop it between our feet. Okay, so when you look at the ball, it should be roughly level with your bottom and your shoulders. Your hips are stacked on top of each other, so a nice straight line above each other. And we're pushing away that top hip to open up a little space between your waist and the floor if you can, a little bit less pressure there, so that keeps our pelvis in neutral. So we're going to protect that little space by engaging those core muscles to hold us nice and still. Okay, now you're going to take a breath in and then you're going to exhale to lift that top knee and inhale to control it back down again. Okay, so exhaling to lift and inhaling to lower. We're keeping it nice and controlled, slow movement to start with. You can speed it up later if you need to, or if you're able to, and keep the control. Now, the ball or whatever you've got between your feet should be nice and still. So we're trying not to hobble the feet around if we can help it. So in this exercise, it makes it a little bit more challenging when the feet are apart trying to hold something and can make you a little bit more wobbly, so you have to try that much harder through the core to maintain that stability. Now, make sure we are really opening the hips, because why use your able-to without rocking back? So you're taking it to that end of range if you're able to. All right, we're going to do three more of this. All right, last one. Okay, and then we're going to bring the feet to the floor and we're going to straighten the legs out. So we've still got something in between our feet if you want to. We've got our hips stacked on top of each other, our knees are locked, and we're pushing away still that top line to open up the space, which is going to be difficult to maintain with this exercise, so we're going to try really hard. Now, you might need a hand on the floor, but make sure you're not pressing too dramatically. All right, and we're going to try and lift that ball away from the floor. So we engage, take a breath in and exhale to lift both legs and inhale to bring them back down again. Now make sure we're not rocking backwards when we do this. We're truly coming out to the side of the legs and inhale back down. If you can take the hand away, then do, you don't have to. Now, you'll feel that your feet, if they're together, will be rubbing against each other slightly as you lift, because you're pushing the top leg further away than the bottom one. If you've got a wall in between your feet, you'll feel it roll between your feet slightly as you lift. Now, if that's happening, then you should be maintaining that little space. Now, you can put your hand in here, make sure you're not crushing your hand as you lift the legs. Now ideally, you've got that lower leg completely locked at the knee to make sure that you're lifting from the hip and not from the knee. So keep those core muscles going. If you're not able to do this one, you can just lift and lower the top leg. All right, we're going to do one more. Lovely. If you keep a bit of burn in the hip, which is what we're going for. Now, we're going to bend the knees, we're going to get rid of the water now. Okay, so we'll use that a little bit later for other exercises. Now, we'll do Clam's Level 3, so I'm going to straighten out the lower leg. You can angle it forward by 20 or 30 degrees to make this slightly more achievable. You're going to hook the top foot behind the bottom knee and you can drop that top knee onto the floor or a cushion or a ball. In fact, I've got that there. So it's got some little bit of support. Okay, now you're going to make sure you're again pushing away that top hip. We've got a little bit of space here. Engage the core and exhale to lift and inhale to control it down. So we're not going to tap down, sorry, we are going to tap down, but we're not going to relax that leg. Then we're going to lift it again. So we just touch it down on whatever you're putting it onto and then you control it back up again. So we're keeping some tension through the leg all the time. We're not allowing your core muscle to go. We're also not allowing that top hip to drop backwards. So it's not a huge movement, but you're working hard through a small range. It really makes that muscle work. So you might feel a bit of work, a little bit of burning, that's okay. As long as, during this class, you don't feel anything sharp and nasty, you can work through a bit of muscle ache. Okay, we're going to do two more, keep hold of those core muscles. Make sure you're not cheating too much by pressing into the floor or rocking the top half of your body backwards too dramatically. Okay, and then you can relax. Now, I'm going to take this away. We're going to bring the whole of the top leg forward and rest it on the floor now, so it's nice and relaxed. We're going to bring the lower leg back, so it's in line with the rest of the body. So now you have a straight line from your bottom foot through your body to your bottom hand. We're going to keep those core muscles working and we're going to work the lower leg. So I want you to rotate the lower leg inwards at your hip. So your big toe is trying to reach up to the ceiling, your kneecap is trying to point forwards. And we're going to lift that leg nice and high. And I want you to glide it forwards. Then we're going to flex the ankle and we're going to pull it back with a straight leg. So point and forward, try and overtake that other foot if you can. Flex, pull back, squeeze the bottom cheek in to come back. It will make you be able to come back a little bit further. We make sure that knee stays straight. So you should be working this inner thigh like crazy now. The muscle doesn't get worked that much very often, so you might feel this quite quickly. Keep those core muscles working to help you. Try and keep your back in neutral, so we're not arching back as your leg comes back behind you. We're going to do one more. Nice sweeping movement as large as you can and then you relax that leg back down again. Good. Okay, so we're going to do some arm openings now. I'm going to adjust my position so that you can see all the way around I do this. So I'm going to go back a little bit. Because we're going to add in a leg to this exercise, so it makes it a little bit more of a stretch, I think. You know, I like to have a larger cushion here. It's up to you what you use, just means you get a bit more support for your head. Now, we're lying crooked lying, so knees are nice and palms out together. Now, what I'm going to do is bring that top foot forward. Okay, I want you to bend the ankle, so you're really pulling it up towards you. You're getting a really nice stretch down the hamstring, down the calf, all the way down the back of the leg. And now we're going to do arm openings from that position. So we take a breath in, engage the core and we exhale to bring that top arm up and over. Eyes follow as it comes back as widely as you can and then inhale back to the beginning. Now, when we come back to the beginning, I then want you to reach for the toes. We get a really nice stretch from the upper back and the shoulder. And then we go back again, we exhale to do that arm opening, up and over, and inhale back, reach for the toe again. And again, exhale, opening the chest to the ceiling, eyes come back and we reach for the foot. Okay, now, we're going to do arm openings Level 2, so we're going to do some circles with the arm. We're going to leave the leg where it is, okay? But we're still feeling a nice stretch down the back of the leg. If you want to move it on top of the other one, that's fine. Okay, so we take a breath in and we exhale to lift up and over. Eyes follow the hand and inhale to sweep down past the leg and back to the beginning. We're going to do another one in that direction. And sweep back, now we're going to change direction. So now we sweep down, drop back, reach up and over, we're mobilizing the rib cage. We lift up and over and one more in that direction. So we get a really nice twist all the way through the spine and back to the centre. Lovely, okay, you can bring that leg back in again. And we'll roll onto our backs now and do some exercises in that position. And we'll get a bit closer to the camera again. Make sure you don't touch my leg anymore, which way is it? There we go, okay. So I'll have to walk high, so we'll use that a little bit later. And I want you to find your rest position now. So we want our feet about hip width distance apart. We want our knee, our pelvis in neutral. So we rock backwards and forwards to find that midway of pelvic tilt, where the bone points on the front of your pelvis, form a level triangle with the floor. And that will leave you with a small gap behind your back. Nothing dramatic, just a little bit of a gentle extend in the spine. Now, we're going to make sure that shoulder blades are in contact with the floor and we bring your palms down by your side. Imagine someone lightly tugging your head away from the rest of your body, so you're really lengthening through the spine. And we're going to tap in the chin slightly as well, so we're not jutting it forward. Now, when you think about each of those core muscles like we have done, so you're lifting the pelvic floor and you're putting down those lower abdominals, just about 30 or 40%. And we're going to keep that contraction while we take some nice deep breaths. So in through the nose and out through the mouth. Concentrate on that diaphragmatic breathing. So try and expand your lower rib cage as you take the breath in and then out. So the upper chest stays nice and relaxed. Keeping that core contraction all the way through the breath cycle. Okay, now, we're going to keep hold of that core contraction. We're going to keep breathing out back if we can. We're going to bring the arms up to 90 degrees to the body. Now, we're going to make sure your shoulder blades are properly anchored back in contact with the floor. And we're going to do some protraction and retraction. In fact, if you want to, you can hold on to your cushion over the ball and give it a squeeze. And that makes your arms work a little bit harder. So if you're pressing whatever you're holding, so we've got tension through the arms, we're keeping the shoulder blades anchored onto the floor. We're going to take a breath in and then we're going to exhale to lift your shoulders forward, reaching towards the ceiling and inhale to control the back again. So it's a small subtle movement. We're using shoulder protraction. You're rounding your shoulders around the rib cage and then retraction. We bring them back and down in contact with the floor. So you can see the wall is lifting, just maybe a couple of inches, nothing dramatic. But it's all coming from the shoulders. The elbow is staying the same amount of flex all the way through the movement. My neck going, chest and my chin are nice and relaxed. So don't attempt to lift the head away from the headrest. But we're pushing into as much range as we can find there. Keeping those core muscles going. Let's do one more. Lovely. Okay, bring your arms back down. I want you to take whatever it is you were using and pop it underneath your bottom. So now you'll be risen up a little bit, you're away from the floor, under your sacrum, and a little bit of an unstable mobility surface. If you've got a cushion, it'll probably be a little bit more stable, but just give you a little bit less stability, so that you have to work hard through the centre. Now, we're going to do scissors, Level 1 to start with. So we're in our rest position, we're relaxing the shoulders. We might have to adjust the pelvis so that we have neutral. So we're still halfway between your pelvic tilt, but this time you might not be quite level with the floor. Okay, now we're going to take a leg to tabletop in turn. So we engage, take a breath in and exhale to bring one leg up into tabletop. So 90 degrees of hip flexion and knee flexion and we inhale to bring it back down. And then we try the other one. So we exhale up and we inhale back down. Relax the shoulders. And so while we're doing this, we want to concentrate on keeping our pelvis nice and level. So we're not particularly on tilting from one side to the other. And we're keeping the shoulders relaxed. So it's tempting, if you haven't got enough stability here, to try and grip, to kind of stabilize and anchor with your shoulders. And that's what we're going to try and avoid. So nice and relaxed arms. Engage those core muscles a bit stronger if you need to, so that your shoulders can relax. All right, so we're going to move on to scissors Level 2. Now, because we're using something underneath our bottom, scissors Level 2 is not that much harder. So you don't have to do this. So you can take this away now to get a bit more stability. Level 2 is with both legs in the air. So you're engaged, engage the ankle and the rib cage down a little bit more to bring the second leg up. Now, if you're too wobbly here or you're starting to dome away from the floor and pop your tummy forward, then you only need to go back to the previous level or take away your finger underneath your bottom, okay? And now again, we're going to tap down. So we take one leg down and we bring it back up and then we change. All right, and again, aiming again is the same, to try and keep the pelvis nice and level, to maintain that neutral spine and to keep the shoulders nice and relaxed. So do it nice and slowly. Just be mindful of how much pressure you've put through your arms. You want to keep it to a minimum, so just light touch on the floor. Now, this is Level 2. If you want to do Level 3, it's a little bit more challenging. One leg goes up as the other one comes down. So it makes you work that much harder. Your legs are heavier on average from the centre when you do this exercise. So you make sure your tummy muscles work a lot harder. Turn that to the shoulders. Now, remember you can go back a level at any point if you need to. We're going to do four more taps, whichever level you're choosing to do. Okay, and then we're bringing the legs down one at a time, still keeping those core muscles working until everything's on the floor. And then I'm going to take away your object. And we're going to pop it between our knees. So we've got something to squeeze now while we're doing the shoulder bridge exercise. So, another one. Hands down by your sides, pelvis in neutral, so have that little rock backwards and forwards. And we're just going to do some shoulder bridges. But I want you to keep the knees together, keep that ball squeezed and keep it in the centre. So we take a breath in and we exhale, we tuck underneath, squeeze the glutes, the bottom cheeks, and thrust forward with the pelvis. Take a breath in at the top and then exhale to peel back down from top to bottom. So we're working on that articulation of the spine. So it's a curling up rather than just a lift. So we take a breath in, exhale, tuck underneath, squeeze the bottom cheeks and peel your back away from the floor. Take a breath in at the top and exhale to peel back down. So we're going to do another one of those in your own time. Tuck underneath, squeeze, you're pushing away the knees, you're pushing down with the heels. Breath in at the top and then exhale to peel down. Get in contact with each spine or segment on the way through and back into neutral. Again, now we're going to take this thing away now, because we're going to do a slightly different variation of the shoulder bridge now. So what I want you to do is you're going to tuck underneath, we're going to peel up and turn it down. One again, we're going to hold that position. Now I want you to take one leg up in the air. Now, we're going to drop the pelvis down, but not all the way. We're leaving the leg in the air and then we thrust forward. Then we drop down halfway and we thrust forward. We're going to do that twice more. So down we go, down to the bottom down, push up nice and high, last one. You have to really work through that supporting leg. We're going to put that leg back down and then we peel down as we did before, articulating through the spine, rocking back into neutral. Good. Okay, now this isn't for everybody, it's a hard exercise. So you can do scissors Level 2 or just carry on with scissors Level 1. Okay, so we're going to do the other side now from that too. So we're going to tuck underneath and we're going to peel away. Come up nice and high, we structure away the other leg. We drop halfway down and then we thrust all the way back up again. Halfway down and thrust forward. Let's do that twice more. So you have to really squeeze the bottom cheek on the supporting leg to lift back up and then bring that leg in and then we peel back down from top to bottom, rolling through the spine and back into neutral. Well done. Okay, we're going to do hip twist Level 2 now. So again, you can squeeze something between your knees if you want to with this one. If you're not, then I want you to bring your knees together. We're going to bring our feet together. We're going to, I'm not touching that cushion. And we're going to bring our arms out to the side a little wider than the hip width now. A little wider than the one before, sorry. But keep both shoulder blades anchored to the floor. They are your anchor with this exercise, we don't let them lift at any point. So we're in neutral, we're going to engage those core muscles. We take a breath in and we exhale to take both knees one way until your head goes the opposite way. Now you've got to push into that stretch and then inhale to come back to the centre. And the other way. Exhaling way, push into the stretch, keeping the shoulders down and inhale back in again. And you can swerve it down and do a breast hold at the end range if you want to. I think it's quite nice doing it as a breath cycle each side, getting through a nice flow of movement. And make sure we're always coming back to neutral, so you've got that little arching behind your back when we come back to the centre, you're not completely flattened onto the floor. You've always got your core muscles working, but on the way to the centre, you can pull in all of the tummy muscles. So effectively, you're leaning with the knees on the way out and then you're activating everything up here to leave with the rib cage on the way back. So you're stabilising yourself back to the floor. Gives you a little bit of extra power. Keep contact with the floor, those shoulders. Now, remember this can be done in double tabletop for those who want more of a challenge. If it is more of a challenge, you don't have to do it. If you want to do the double tabletop version, take this away. Bring one leg up at a time. So when you bring this forearm up, remember you're anchoring down the rib cage to activate the upper tummy muscles a little stronger. Now, you can pop that thing back to your knees once you're up there. Press your, have your feet together as well. And then it's the same action, you're exhaling out to go over and you're inhaling to come back in. So yeah, nice spine twist. Make sure the tummy muscles work all that much more harder, that much more hard when your legs are in the air. But you're more likely to try and lift the shoulders and make absolutely sure you're getting that contact behind the shoulder blades. Now, you can, if you start to get a little bit tired doing this, bring your knees towards you and it makes it a little bit easier. Okay. Now, if you want more of a challenge, remember you can stretch your legs out to 45 degrees if you want to. And that makes again, and that much heavier, it makes the whole thing that much harder. So wherever you want to be with the legs, you can adjust it to make it a challenge. Okay, take the ball away, one leg down at a time and back to the floor. Okay, now, we're going to finish the exercises in this position with hundreds. Okay, now, you can choose how you let your head in the air to make it a challenge that's achievable. I'm just going to do this in single tabletop, because we've done quite a lot of double already. So we're going to bring one leg up with the core muscles engaged. We're going to float our arms away from the floor. And then a bit of an advanced challenge you don't have to do. You can bring your shoulders and your head away from the floor as well. Now, holding that position, everything's nice and still, except for the arms, they have a pulse. And it's called hundreds, because I do get it in a hundred pulses. I'm not sure we're going to do that today. But we keep it going, the arms are basically giving you a bit of instability. So you have to work harder through the centre to keep the rest of the body nice and still. Okay, we're about halfway through, so we're going to change legs. But bring the arms and the shoulders down to change legs. Other leg up into tabletop, arms up, shoulders up if you're doing that bit and we pulse. So keep the tummy muscles pulled in, we're keeping your pelvis in neutral. Okay, ten more. Five, four, three, two, one. Bring the arms and the shoulders down, relax. And then we bring the leg down, keeping the core muscles working and then everything can relax. Okay, now, we're going to turn into seven four-point kneeling now. We're going to do some exercises that way up. So. This one involves a little bit of toe mobility, because we are actually going to tuck the toes underneath. So I'm going to show you a quick alternative that you can do if you don't have that kind of mobility through your toes, because not everybody finds this position comfortable. Now, what you can do is get a little cushion and pop it underneath your feet completely and do the exercise from that, from that position, so your toes are not tucked underneath. But ideally, if you can, we're going to tuck underneath. All right, so we want our knees directly underneath our hips. We want our hands slightly forward of our shoulders, so a little bit of an angle you can see on the arm there. Hands are about shoulder width apart though, elbows nice and soft. And I want you to make sure your pelvis starts in neutral. So you're not arching up, you're not sinking down, you're somewhere in the middle. You've got a nice flat back posture and we're engaging our core muscles there. Okay, now, we're going to do a little lift, this is leg pull in prone. We're going to lift our knees away from the floor, but really not very far. So we engage the core and we lift up. And then you see a little bit of a gap underneath my knees. Ooh, shuddering. And then we're going to control it back down again. So the smaller the gap you have under your knees that you're holding, actually the more challenging this is. So if you're lifting very high, you're doing it just kind of a little bit of a cheat. Okay, so we're going to engage the core and we exhale to lift, take a breath in to hold it and exhale to come right down along shuddering. It's a difficult exercise. Breath in and exhale to come up. Breath in to hold, exhale to come down. So it's tiny movement. We're going to do three more. You're going to lift, hold it, control it back down. Now, what we don't want when you lift is to be doing that, okay? So you're not bringing your hips forward, your hips are coming directly up. Hold it, control it down. Okay, last one, keep the core muscles working. Lift and hold, control it down. Good, okay, you've got to untuck your toes and we're going to sit back on our heels. Now, reach forward and sink nice and low to the floor. So we're in that shell stretch, child's pose, whatever you want to call it. And we're going to hold that for a few seconds before we walk our arms around. So we're going to walk our arms around in one direction. So we're going to go to the right at the moment and we're going to lift, sorry, reach the left hand even further and we're going to drop the left hip down and away. So we get a really good side stretch through the left hand side. We're just going to hold it for a few seconds. And then we're going to walk back to the centre gently and then we come around the other way. So now we're walking to the left, we're going to reach away the right arm and we're going to drop the right hip down and away. So you get that nice stretch through the right hand side. And then we get the leg back. Okay, now, we are going to come back again into four-point kneeling now. We're going to do thread the needle. Okay, so we've got that same position, hands slightly forward of our shoulders, hips directly over our knees and a nice flat back posture where we've engaged those core muscles. Okay, we take a breath in to bring the left, sorry, right hand, oh no, my eyes swallowing that hand. And then exhale to come through that gap that you formed, dropping the shoulder, softening the left elbow and then coming back in. And we're going to change sides, so pop that hand there. We're going to inhale to bring the left arm up and out and then exhale to reach loose, softening the right elbow, dropping the left shoulder and coming back in again. Now, as you reach through, make sure you're not dropping the bottom back. So we're keeping the hips over the knees. So we'll do that again. Inhaling up and exhaling through, dropping down, softening the supporting arm and back in. And the other way. So we're getting a really nice twist through the spine each time we do this, reaching through. Now, this is not for everybody, you don't have to do this. I'm moving forward so that my leg doesn't disappear off the screen. You can do a leg lift. Now, it's opposite arm and leg lifts together, okay? So don't even say sorry, otherwise you will fall over. So we're going to do the right arm. So inhaling up, exhaling through. And as you come through, you're going to lift away that opposite leg. Okay, so coming nice and low as you can, pointing toe, coming back in again. Optional, remember. So inhale up and exhaling through. Let's not go all over that, otherwise we'll see the video stop and restart. It's like pass out before we move it. So it does happen. Okay, we're going through, just do one more each side. So we're stretching that leg to give you a nice straight line. Ooh, lost it. And back in, we're going to try the other side. Coming through, straightening out the leg. We don't want to put weight on the shoulder there. And still hovering the arm and back in. Okay, all right, sit back again. Just let the wrists have a little bit of a rest. You can do some rotations of the wrist if you want, loosen out the back. Lovely. Okay, now we're going to change the ends of the mat. Ooh, okay, so we've got our hip rest at the other end. And I'm going to put the big one close by. And where is my ball? There it is. So we're here, we're going to do Clam's Level 2 again, this way around. So remember, we put something between our feet. Okay, all right, so when you look down, your feet are level with your bottom and your shoulders. Your hips are stacked on top of each other, we're pushing away that top line, remember, with a little space under here, engage those core muscles. All right, take a breath in and exhale to lift and inhale back down. And again. Exhale to lift, inhale to control it back down. So moving nice and wide, keeping hold of those core muscles. Really aiming for a nice smooth transition, nice and juda free if possible. Feet nice and still in space, protecting that little space at your waist. Make sure we're always pushing away. We'll do one more on that side. And we'll bring the knees down, we're going to bring the feet down. So now we're going to do that lift and lower of the ball with a straight leg. So we're in a nice lengthened line, really pushing away that top hip, pushing away that top leg. Hips are stacked on top of each other, we've still got the core muscles working. Remember, you have a hand on the floor for light stability here for balance. So take a breath in and then exhale to lift away, really pushing away that top line further and then inhale to control it back down. So keep it slow. You want to come down as slowly as you came up, okay? So that you're not just letting gravity take you back down again, you're making your legs work hard. So we're taking away that supporting arm if you're able to, but make sure you haven't just pressed through the lower arm. So that should be fairly relaxed as well. It's easy to end up gripping the floor crazy to try and stabilize. And that's okay if you need to, but make sure you're aware of it, so that you can reduce it over time. And we're going to do two more. Last one. Okay, and we'll take away the ball. We're going to straighten out the lower leg, hook the top foot behind the bottom knee, bring that top knee onto the floor, or actually I did it on the other side, didn't I? I put it on the ball. So you can put that on a small cushion or you can have it on the floor, it's up to you. Okay, so we still want that little space at the waist, we're still actively pushing away with top hip. Okay, we engage, take a breath in and exhale to lift. Inhale to control it down. Make sure we're not tilting. Make sure we're not tilting the pelvis back, so your hips are still stacked, aligned with your shoulder, you're not leaning the upper body. Now, remember you can have a hand here for support, but make sure, again, light touch, you're not getting weight knuckles. Now, the top foot should be in contact with your leg and not the floor, okay? So we're not pivoting the tail on the floor, we're pivoting the back of the leg. Now again, nice smooth movement and try not to relax the leg on whatever you're taking the lead on to. So we shouldn't feel heavy in between each one. We're keeping that tension through the leg, keeping the tension here, just light tap and then back up. We're going to do two more. Lovely, and then you come back. And then we're going to bring that foot forward, take away with whatever and leave that aside. So the leg's on the floor now and relaxed. We're going to bring the lower leg back, that's the one that's going to do the work now. So we want to rotate that lower leg inwards, kneecap points forwards, big toe reaching up to the ceiling, engage the core. Take a breath in and we're going to exhale to lift and glide it forward. Flex the ankle and inhale to pull it back, squeezing the bottom cheek. Point and forwards as far as you can go, flex and as far back as you can go without bending the knee. It doesn't matter what you do with this top hand really, it can't help with this one, I don't think. So there's no cheaper position. Try and keep this top leg relaxed, so. And now I've seen people in class tensing up that lower leg. So try and make sure that it is in full contact with the floor. And we'll do one more. All right, and then we lower that leg back down again. Good. Okay, so we're going to go back into crook lying, we're going to do arm openings. I like to have a larger headrest, so I'm going to change my maneuver. So we're going to have our palms out in front. I've got to move the mat, otherwise you can't see my foot, so I'm just going to bring that very slightly. Camera angle is better. All right, so because we're going to add in, if you want to, the leg. So we're going to bring the leg forward and relax it on the floor. I don't know if you can see well, but my leg is completely straight. I've locked that knee out and I've brought it up as high as I can to get a nice stretch on the back of the leg and into the calf. Okay, all right, so we take a breath in, we engage core, we take a breath in and we exhale to bring that arm up and over. Eyes falling in, all the way back, do that, twist through the spine and inhale back to the beginning. And again, exhaling to open. And inhaling to come back. We'll do one more like that. We were adding in reach, weren't we? So we're going to reach for the tail each time. Let's do that again, so we'll do one more to get that right. So we open the chest and as we come back, we reach for the toes to get that extra stretch down the back of the leg. And we do that one more. Lovely. Reach for the toes, get the extra stretch and then we come back to the beginning. Now we're going to turn it into a circle, you can leave the leg there or you can put it back on top of the other one, that's up to you. Now we're going to lift up and over, turning that into a big circle as we go over and sweep down half the leg. And then again. So we're going to do two in that direction. We're mobilising the upper back shoulder and the rib cage, we're going to go the other way now. Make sure we're not pushing into any pain with this, we're just going as far in each direction as we can comfortably. We're pushing to stiffness, but don't push into pain. Lovely, okay. All right, so bring that leg back in, we're going to roll onto our backs. Our headrest is fine now. Now we're going to get a little bit closer to the camera and we'll do some loose stretches to start with. So, I'm going to rearrange myself. So now on your back, we're going to prop right ankle onto left knee. Okay. And then if you can, you can bring that left knee towards you. So we're getting a nice stretch through the right butt also, also cheap. And we're just going to hold that for a few seconds. So rather than doing stretches, you hold it longer at a lower level rather than pulling in really tightly. Yeah, that's handy to give yourself an injury. Just gives the muscles time to let go and lengthen. Okay, so we're going to keep the legs crossed, but we're going to pop the left foot back on the floor. And we're going to close that little gap between our legs so they're fully crossed. And we're going to take both legs over to the right hand side as you look to your left. So we're keeping that left shoulder in contact with the floor, should be getting a nice stretch somewhere through the left side of your body. And theoretically this is a hip stretch, but you might feel it a little bit higher up if you're tight in the back. Okay, now we're going to come back to the centre and we'll do both those the other way around. So uncross your legs, put your left ankle onto your right knee, bring that right knee towards you so we can sort of put it behind the thigh on the front of the leg, whichever, depends what kind of range you have. So we're getting a stretch through the left bottom cheek, you can left leg at the moment. Okay. And then we're going to put the right foot back to the floor, keeping the legs crossed. And then we're going to close that gap so they're fully crossed. Take both legs over to the left as you look to your right. We're keeping that right shoulder down and you should be feeling a stretch somewhere in the middle of the body there. Hopefully around the hips somewhere. Okay, all right, and then gently come back to the beginning. Now, we're going to uncross the legs and bring both knees to your chest. Doing a lumbar stretch now, we're going to just loosen out the hips to start with. So we're just doing some little circles with the knees in either direction, both directions. So being nice and relaxed, do the lower back, hips and knees. And then you can pull in a little bit stronger for a lumbar stretch. So you separate the knees a little bit, bring them towards you. That's a nice gentle lumbar stretch. If you want a bit more of a challenge, you can hold on to your feet or your ankles. Bring your feet up, separate the feet so they're quite wide apart and they're the same kind of distance as your knees. And you're kind of pulling on your feet to try and draw your knees in towards your armpits. Now, in theory, we're trying to get the lower back on the floor as well. And we're trying to pull those shoulder blades so that the shoulder blades are in contact with the floor at the same time. So this is a nice lumbar stretch, but also gives you a really good hamstring stretch and a hip stretch generally. Now, we turn this into the frog stretch. So this is the happy baby. Frog stretch is where you bring your feet together and then your feet, your heels too also, and then you drop your knees out to the side. So get a bit of a stretch in the back, but also in the thigh. Now, variation of this one, which you might like to try is the butterfly stretch where you put your feet on the floor and you drop your knees out to the side. I find that a little bit better, a bit more of a stretch. You'll do, and make sure you don't dramatically arch your back away from the floor. So tuck your tailbone underneath a little bit if you're in this position. So you've got a neutral pelvis, you can pop your hands on your knees to give yourself a bit of more thighs to get a bit of overpressure into that stretch. Okay. Then we're just going to bring our knees together, separate the feet a little bit and we can do some locking of the pelvis. So I want you to tilt the pelvis in either direction. So you're tucking underneath and then arching away from the floor. We're going to do some little pelvic rotations as well, so I'm going to use some circles with the hips and the other direction. This is just to loosen out any stiffness that we may have created in the back with those stretches. Okay. All right. And then I want you to roll onto your side, gently push yourself back up into sitting. And that's the end of the mat work class, so thanks very much.